Oh, please. Wake everybody up.
Good evening. Welcome to the May 19th City Council Meeting. For those in the audience here and for those out in TV land, welcome and hopefully you'll get a chance to enjoy the weather the next week. From what I understand, it's supposed to be drier. I know that there are a lot of people that want to get ready to build their arcs, but maybe we will get some opportunity to have some dry weather. But at any rate, welcome and we'll do roll call. Mayor Welling?
Here.
Gary Sheeler?
Here.
Orkinagin?
Here.
Cope?
Here.
Pritchett?
Here.
Matten?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a regime just as strong.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There is a potential, well, it is a correction, right? We want to, the public, Safety and Public Works wants to pull the select harvest at trail site off the consent calendar and put it on their calendar or on their agenda. Motion approved as amended. Agreed. Any other discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We'll go adopt the amended consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll do a roll call. Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkinagin?
Yep.
Cope?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Under the consent calendar, we do have to call for applicants. One is the Cable TV Advisory Committee and the other is the Transportation Advisory Committee. So if interested, please contact staff at the city office. Approval of bills and transfer of funds, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Personal and Finance and I so moved to approve the bills and transfer of funds as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All consent, roll call. Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkinagin?
Yep.
Cope?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Number seven, we have somebody in the audience who wants to speak to us. Hopefully not to do anything else with any of us, but we're, we have the privilege tonight of having Corwin County Sheriff Todd Dahl.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Was time limits imposed?
Thank you, everyone, for, for me. I promise I won't take more than an hour or so.
Now you sound like the mayor.
Do I? I actually made contact with Chief McQuiston before he came and he let me know that he was a little bit under the weather today and had some health stuff going on and I said, "Well, can I sit in your chair?" And he said, "No." So you know. Couple of things I just wanted to touch base on, excuse me, I was a little confused, Mr. Sheeler and Mrs. Cope.
You have different, different name tags there, so I was just a little bit confused.
What are they saying?
Uh-oh. They're mixed up.
Oh, I didn't know that.
That's okay. I understand who's who. Thank you for, again, for having me. It is my yearly visit to the, to the city council and actually it's, it's been quite a treat, actually, over eight years that I've done this, not only with our townships within the county of Corwin, but all of our city councils as well. Excuse me, in eight years, I think I've only missed one and that was due to a hockey tournament that I had to be at and it's just one of those things that I promised to do eight years ago and one of those things that I really like to go out and do personally. I can, I really take to heart what the people say, talk to people one-on-one basis and certainly they can put a face to a name, so that's a good thing. I just wanted to start off by saying, we've been busy within our office. Obviously, two weekends ago with the fishing tournament along with opener fishing, it was, it was quite busy as we all agree around here. Nice thing when you get through a real busy weekend like that, we didn't have any real bad, serious situations that occurred. And, you know, we have one coming up this weekend, so once we get through that and hopefully with no fatalities and we're certainly hoping with no drownings too as well, we know they're going to start coming up here probably tomorrow before the nice weekend that we haven't seen in many months here. So there again, we're going to be working some extra shifts starting tomorrow and it's going to go on for about two weeks. We're going to concentrate on seat belts. It's the TZD or what we used to call Project 55 a long time ago when I first started turned into Safe and Sober, so. So you'll see extra cars out on the road, the state, the county, the city municipalities and so forth, they're all going to work together and try to get us, we're close, folks, we're close to 100% seat belt compliance and that's pretty neat. They do save lives and folks, I'm here to tell you that, you know, after being a law enforcement officer for 28 years, I can tell you that seat belts do save lives. And that's really what we're all about, is trying to get the word out to people and educate them as well. That being said, I wanted to go right into some of the things that we're concentrating on is distracted driving, texting while driving and things along that line. This is really becoming something that is, is quite interesting to me as a sheriff and a law enforcement officer. It's, it's something that if I pull up to a semaphore or a stoplight and I can look around and I'm about the only one not on a cellphone. And keep in mind, folks, that you, that is, that is illegal. You can't do that while you're even stopped at a stop sign or even at a semaphore or a light or whatever that may be. And a lot of people think that you can, it's only while you're in motion and that's not the way that the law reads. You know, when I, when I would show up at the old Paul Bunyan Lights at 210, 371, seven o'clock in the morning, you might have eight people sitting there waiting for the light and seven of them are on their cellphones. And what you do at seven o'clock in the morning on your cellphone, I'm not quite sure, but what we're trying to do is get the education out to the people that they can wait, that text can wait. Being a father of a 19 and a 17-year-old, it's, you know, they, they were born, it seems like, with one of those things in their hand, but all of us, I shouldn't say all of us, but, but most of us can remember that we never had cellphones and we did just fine without those. So we always think that we have to be on that, on that thing all the time and in reality you don't and it's very, very dangerous. So we're trying to get the word out when it comes to that kind of stuff. Like I said, this, this weekend's going to be busy and we all certainly know it's going to be busy. Being a fisherman and a very avid outdoorsman, I can tell you that the lakes were just packed on opener, all over the place, not just because of the governor's fishing opener in our area, but they were just, they were getting anxious to get out on a boat and that's why this weekend is really going to be, we're expecting a lot more traffic within our area. So we would advise and hopefully everybody knows, slow down, take your time, drive sober, buckle up and do all the things that we're trying to do as law enforcement officers is get the word out. Last year we had what, it was a tremendous year in 2013. We started a thing about seven years ago, it's called a CAIFA. And a CAIFA stands for self-initiated field activity. And what we do in those CAIFAs, we require that our deputies that are out on the road, for example, tonight, they would be required to go and check doors or pull over a, pull over a person on a traffic stop or serve civil papers. It's self-initiated, something that those officers are initiated. Last year, or excuse me, 2013, all of 2013, we had 17,000 of those CAIFAs that our deputies did. They're required to complete five on a shift and that's, that's a lot of doors checked, you know, and that's, it's a neat thing because they're really taking great pride in going out and doing that too as well. Checking on doors, whether it be a house check or checking on businesses for that matter, so it's, it's a pretty neat deal. We've seen a huge rise in our gun permits within our area here, right around from 300 and some in 2011 to 500 and some 2012, 2013, we had over 1,200 that went through our office. And that's, you know, we can certainly understand and we certainly know some of the issues as far as the Second Amendment goes and, and people are concerned with that as well. So that's why we're seeing the rise in that, in that, in the gun permits. We're still seeing in our area, folks, it's methamphetamines, very high-grade marijuana. Keep in mind that the fluctuation of the people comes the fluctuation of everything else. Being a hometown boy and a very proud Brainerd warrior, I can tell you that, I won't tell you the year, but I can tell you that things have changed over the years. You know, I can remember there, when there wasn't much and I'm sure you all have stories, there wasn't much past the stoplights at 210 and 371. I start off a lot of my talks and I ask where a number of these places are and a lot of those people remember where they were. A lot of them aren't any longer there, changed hands three times or four times since then, but we've, we've had to adapt to those changes. We've really had to move on within our, when I was the 15th deputy hired here back in 86, 85 in Boat and Water, now we have over 40 in the summertime, we have 55 correctional officers and about 125 on full-time staff within our sheriff's office. We have about 185 prisoners right now as of this morning and that fluctuates all the time with our state prisoners coming in and out and they're on their way to a boot camp is what they're doing. So they're, they're kind of work their way out and they're, they would go up to Moose Lake if in fact they, they pass the process. So we are boarding those prisoners for the state of Minnesota, $55 per day and per day. So, and I don't know if I'm making any sense, but we are, we're paid per, from the state to, to house their prisoners while they wait. And it's usually around two months or so before they go. Like I said, marijuana, we're seeing very little traces of heroin in our area, central region of Minnesota, they're keeping us posted as far as sheriffs and law enforcement officers as heroin's back up on the rise because it's cheaper than methamphetamines now. And folks, it just, you know, when I, I gave a talk about, two weeks ago, we talked about methamphetamines. You know, methamphetamines is not new. It's not something that just came out with the computer age. It's something that has been out since, you know, for 30 years. Our computer age really, really made the movement. I mean, it really kind of, you know, if you were a Google at one time, they would give you a recipe on how to make it. Now we're seeing the fluctuation with the people there, the heroin is probably going to find, find its way up into our region too as well. But there again, I mean, I've talked about the fluctuation of people. We're not a major corridor right down to the Twin Cities area, Chicago area, Duluth such as that and Fargo-Moorhead. However, we have where everybody else wants to be, we have lakes here. And when you have 417 lakes and 92,000 acres of water, I mean, if I wasn't from here, I'd want to be here too. And that really seems to bring in a lot of people and I don't blame them. We're a vacation Mecca in the summertime and you know, folks, it's really not from Memorial Day to Labor Day anymore, whereas one time that was our busy season. It's long before that and long after that. Aside from this winter and last winter, we had, we had generally pretty mild winters and we saw people coming up from the southern states from March and not going back until well into December. So anyhow, that being said, it's, it's, you know, it's truly an honor, folks, for me to be standing in front of you. I have announced that I will be seeking my third term as your sheriff and, you know, it's kind of funny, I always talk about Sheriff Warrenburg and I, I remember the thing in the same office that I am so fortunate to, to get a desk in right now. I'll tell you, I remember walking in and there was Sheriff Warrenburg and Captain Dan Bentley, who has since passed, and Captain Dick Ross. And I remember them asking what I was going to do and I was quite intimidated because every one of them had, them together, I think they had about 800 years of law enforcement experience. But being a paramilitary operation, you pretty much stood at attention when those guys were around because they did have so much experience. Sheriff Warrenburg did ask me in front of the two captains, "What are you going to do, son?" I remember that too. And I said, "You know, Sheriff, with due respect, it's, I want to do what you're doing. I'm from here, I love what I'm, I'm doing right now on Boat and Water and I want to work my way up and to be sheriff here someday." And folks, it's an honor. I mean, I, I know I've said this long before, so it's not just because it's an election year, it's because something that I truly believe in. It's a very cherished position that I'm in and I feel very honored to represent all of you as your sheriff. So I'm really here, Mr. Sheriff, to answer any questions that anybody that might have of the, I think I still have about 45 minutes, so.
Gary?
I have a couple of them.
Sir?
I don't know whether to call you Mrs. Cope or...
Enjoy your moment.
Okay, I will, thank you.
And I should reach right over and grab that sticker. But I, I want to say, I want to thank you for the sticker. You did put a sticker on my door at Brainerd County Power and I appreciate that. It said, you know, that you did a visit and checked the place out and stuff like that and actually I thought that was, you know, I didn't know you were doing it, but I saw that and I thought that was really great. And I think everybody in the business world or anywhere that you checked, you know, putting that sticker on there that you did a complete check of it and everything, it was great. But I want to go back to the cellphone and the distraction. I don't hear or see citations done and I don't know how many you would have, but the other words I hear is, "Well, the police are using their cellphones." You can go to any intersection and see them on their phone and they're using computers and yet they're policing us not to and the distraction goes both ways. Can you help us out for that?
And thank you for bringing that up. I know that I brought that up on statewide saying, you know, we do have computers in there and there is a ton of information that comes across on those computers that doesn't come out on our radios. We can do instant texting messages and things like that, but it's, when you're going on a call and, and going red lights and sirens and things like that, that's the last thing that you're going to do is get on that computer, get your one hand going on that computer. But there is no doubt that we've all talked about that as well. As to the texting while they're driving, you know, we certainly talk to our officers about that all the time. At my age, I can't see the font and it doesn't go big enough, plus I don't really care about it. Well, I can wait till it stops. But with, with the younger generation, hopefully you're seeing those squad cars that are pulled off to the side of the road, they're answering those phone calls and eventually we might see that, folks, as, as far as we cannot talk on our cellphones whatsoever, that's including hands-free sets.
You know, leading by example is a great way for everybody, you know?
Well, we like to think that we do. And, you know, it's, it's one of those things as far as, you know, I, I personally, I look around, when I pass them, I look around. There's so many things that are going on within that squad car. It's important for them to focus on primarily one thing and that's what, hopefully they're doing that. You know, when, when we talk about distracted driving, we talk about, there's so many things that are going on even in your vehicle. You know, your main focus really, and I've said this for many, many years, your main focus has to be on that drive. You know, like I said, I am a father of 17 and a 19-year-old going on 38 and I can tell you that with, with my children, they've been talked to, talked to and talked to until they're so sick of me talking to them about that. Just give you a little, it's kind of a funny story. My son, who's 17, going on 18, he just got his driver's license and I thought, "Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to call him, see if he answers his phone. If he does, he is in trouble." Sure enough, so I called him, no answer, I thought, "Oh, good." Well, and I, they have caller ID. Of course, he's not going to answer his phone. So anyhow, the one thing about that is, the one thing about that is, is hopefully they don't. We, folks, it's not just the 17-year-olds, it's in the 16-year-olds. We have done numerous educational opportunities, what we call them, where we go and we use unmarked vehicles and we'll pull up next to somebody on a stop sign or on a stoplight and pull over people. A lot of those people are not ticketed as of yet. We do, we understand we will have to eventually. It's like a seat belt, that was an educational opportunity, now we have to guide ourselves into, to citing for that offense. But there are, there are so many crashes, head-on crashes, crashes that are off the road, right, left, that are caused by cellphones and by texting and it's, it's becoming very, very dangerous for itself.
One more question back to that would be computer fraud and internet fraud and, you know, your crimes that are over the computer. How are you handling that? Because that's a whole new field for...
That's a, that's a whole new, and thank you for bringing that up. We are doing that as far as the internet access. We, I, I think some of you have been at some of the many talks that I've done that had to do with identity theft, fraud, things along that line. We just gave a presentation at our triad group that had to do primarily just with that. We, we talked about some of the cases that investigator Russ Wicklund from Baxter Police Department, when he was working a statewide task force, how many things that he's been exposed to in that. Folks, it's amazing how easy it is to, to lose your identity. And once that happens, we're seeing hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that these, that these people, and they prey on our Minnesota nice, they really do. They prey on the fact that, you know, I was, I was raised by my parents in South Brainerd that a handshake was just as good as anything on paper. Well, it's changed just a little bit since then, although my parents do believe in that still. They've, we've got them to start thinking that, you know, we have to advance our, our minds a little bit and say, you know, not everybody's as trustworthy as they used to be. So getting back to that, we have people within our office that are absolute whizzes when it comes to tracing things, going back as far as computers, cellphones, things along that line. We're working with ICAC, which is Internet Crimes Against Children. We've been involved in that for years and years and years where they prey on our children. We've had investigators that have went out and got on a chatroom with adults throughout our area here. They eventually found their way to our jail too as well. You know, it's, it's amazing. You know, we can educate our children, but you got to remember too that it's, it's our job as parents and leaders out there to get that, get the word out there, get the education out there, let them know that there are people, plenty of people out there that are preying on us and we don't want that to happen to them.
Thank you. Anybody else have any question?
I think I have about a half hour, Mr. Mayor.
He's got a half hour, so I, I'll take up 20 minutes.
Thank you.
One of the things and when I go, my wife and I go to business out in California and we were told, I mean, this is a few years ago, we were told that when you have a cellphone with you and that thing rings, if you're driving that car, you do not even get close to your ear. And so the first thing I do is I whip it over, I give it to my wife and I says, "You talk to him." And, and to me, that's the best way of doing it because if you're not, and I don't know about having, you know, police or, you know, being able to do it otherwise, but I, to me, that's the best thing is not have any cellphone use at all. Even here, if I get a cellphone or call, I'll pull over someplace and call them back or I'll let it ring and find out who it is and call them back.
And that's a, that's a good point too. We're seeing a lot more cars that are pulled off to the side of the road, a lot of companies that are out there, once they receive that phone call, it's their job to pull over a safe manner and answer that phone call or return it. Keep in mind, folks, that even with a hands-free set, that your mind is on bringing bread and milk and whatever else and whatever is talked about on that phone and it's not on the driving. It's about the kids that you have to pick up at six o'clock because they were at baseball practice or whatever that may be. Your mind isn't on the driving. It should focus totally on that driving and driving alone and that's such a big thing nowadays. When we didn't have that, we had the radio. Of course, many of us were, were raised without any air conditioning or anything, oh, so we had the window down, that was about it. Now things have changed. You know, we have GPS, we have a lot of things going on with inside the interior.
I got 10 more minutes.
Yes, sir.
One of the things and I, I've been watching TV the last couple nights of ads and they're, they're really cool ads and they're shows these guys driving along, you know, and they've got a sandwich that they're going to be eating and all of a sudden they see this car that's usually got little lights on, whatever, and they're taking and they're trying to take the sandwich, drop the sandwich and trying to, and then they're kind of doing like this, you know? And they, and they, there was about three of them in a row and they said, they, they see that and they, they, you know, pick them up. So I'm glad to see that the people are, are using, I mean, they do say lies. There was a, on TV tonight on news, they showed a car that was completely mangled, the girl ended up not in really good physical shape. I mean, she had a broken back, I think, and a couple other things, but she was wearing her seatbelt. He said if she hadn't been wearing her seatbelt, she would have been dead. So seatbelts do save lives and, and I think more people, it's becoming more automatic, I think, for a lot of people because number one, if you don't have it, you, they can even find you what, a hundred bucks or better?
Oh, absolutely, yes. And thank you for bringing that up. I mean, we, there again, we are very compliant within our county here. When I speak about the county, I speak of our whole lakes area. We'd like to be 100% compliant, but we're well into probably 95% compliance here. So I can, I can also tell, tell you all that I've been to many, many crashes in my career and those crashes, I, I fully believe that a lot of those crashes that I went to where they were, they were thrown from the vehicle, children thrown from the vehicle, if they were belted in, not only just with seat belts, but with car seats as well, that they would still be alive today. So it is a, it's a big thing.
One of the things that my wife and mentioning about seat belts and stuff like that and there's a cartoon showing where somebody's got a seatbelt on, you know, a kid's got a seatbelt on and a person's driving and the first thing you do is you put your arm in front of that person because that's what we used to do when we were driving without having seatbelts. I go back a few years, you know, like...
I remember, Mr. Mayor, I hate to age myself a little bit, but I do remember sticking that hand out, like that hand was going to help in any way at a, at a 50 mile per hour crash, but we thought it would.
Anyway, but thank you for...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
...being such an excellent sheriff and editor of your department and all of the...
Thank you.
...taking care of this area because we do need people like you out there...
Thank you.
...getting care of us. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, just a suggestion, that with hot weather coming on, you would have some notices out through the news media to people to not leave little children in the car in the hot, hot weather or pets or...
That's a good point.
Because every year there are some real tragedies that didn't have to happen and no one does it on purpose, I'm sure, but you'd be surprised by the news media announcement. People do see it and sometimes it sticks in their mind.
Absolutely.
I just ask you to consider that.
Thank you for saying that. That's a good point.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I guess we're going to cut you loose early.
A little early, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, could I have five seconds for a name change?
Sure.
Yes.
We have to have the engineer do that because, you know...
There's a fee associated with that.
Nikki?
Thank you.
We don't know about this. I didn't even look when I came in here. I didn't pay any attention.
Is that with your personnel, it's going to change?
Yeah. Committee reports start with Personnel and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item one was the approval of bills attached to our funds, that's been dispensed with. Item two is the Brainerd HRA acquisition, 507 South Sixth Street, the downtown motel. In your packet, you've got some nice fill-in information from the HRA director about where the HRA is on this and some of the more details of the, of the situation and the proposed purchase and probably the most exciting part is, is where this could go and what it could mean for the city of Brainerd. That being said, so at least the details are there as to hopefully let us make a decision as to whether we want to stay a part of this or whether it's time to say, "No, no, we don't." I hope you've all read it and Mr. Pritchett is going to make the motion on this.
All right. My motion is that the city stay involved with the HRA on this and the reason we use the word involvement, we are not promising any funds. There are, we were informed by Ms. Bergman that there are, and by, actually, Mr. Parks, that sometimes there are grants that can be applied for only through the city. When, when we're looking at this, we have to look at, it's going to be, I also would like to see this forwarded to the EDA so that they can take a look at that and they might be able to help out. Part of our concern was the size of the lot and there's a couple other things in play like the possibility of purchasing the five lots to the north. What we're kind of looking, okay. Yep, okay, I need my second before we go. There we go. So it's, it's that the city stay involved, that we refer this to the EDA and that we possibly look at some of the numbers as if there were to be a development, what kind of return would we get?
I have one question.
Yeah.[1731.54]
And that question is, do you think we're overpaying for this? Cause, you know, and I, I heard about it earlier and basically couldn't find a buyer and it was presented to a lot of realtors, a lot of people and nobody came forward to purchase it and then now when I see that we're paying the price that we are or proposing, was there any discussion that maybe this is kind of a high number for a lot that's really not usable?
Yeah, it's something I, I did think about, but we did not really discuss that. I don't think they discussed that in the HRA meetings.
Yeah, I, I know that Jennifer's had a lot of discussion with the owner of that building and over and above the fact that, of course, they wanna want something for, cause it was appraised at a hundred and some thousand. Um, I think the more important thing is that that will be part of a tip history and if we can find a way to, um, acquire that property and demo it and, um, do something with the other properties around that, then it is viable. Right now, the city itself is not, um, is, is no financial burden on this. The HRA itself, um, has, board has not approved that yet and so right now, we're still in the discussion pieces of that. Um, I, I don't know that it's necessarily overpaid because the property that, you know, if, of course, if that motel was decent shape, it'd be worth a hundred plus thousand dollars.
Just to help out, I did check with a couple of realtors and this was, had to be six, seven months back or when I looked at it and the price range came in in the thirties, you know, that they thought that this, and I know that he has a debt close to what we're paying for and so we're kind of relieving a debt with a bank versus really paying for what it's worth. That's gonna be my personal opinion.
I think I shared a concern not to, you know, double. It just, it seems like if it's a non-conforming lot, did I hear that somewhere along here? Um, that no one can do anything with anyway?
Not by itself.
Right. And then, you know, there's the demolition and cleanup. It just seems like an awful lot of money for, for what's sitting there to me. Who appraised it at over a hundred thousand?
No, it's not appraised at, what do you mean, prior, the county, the county?
The county assessed value as a hundred.
County assessed.
Hundred and two, isn't it?
Mr. Chair, if the motion is to simply stay involved and if by that they mean simply, uh, to continue to listen to what the HRA has to say and if, if, uh, we would put our name on a grant application, I'm supportive of that, but I share and even expand on what I think I hear Alderman, Sheeler and Bergenhagen saying, uh, I don't think the city should put one penny into it. If we've got any extra money, let's put it towards some of this capital improvement program that we don't know how to fund. I would simply point out that if this is going to referendum, I'm talking about the CIP in the fall and, and you can be certain, the public is going to be scrutinizing a lot of things. And if they see that the city's got money to put on this, they're gonna say, come on, what's wrong with you people? If you've got capital improvements you need and you've got money, put it there. And so, not to belabor it, but I'll support a motion to stay involved as long as we all have a very clear understanding. If it comes to the point of city money going into it, my vote is no. I'll tell you that right off the bat. And I read all this, you know, kind of ballyhoo about the SCH, how many years did we pay their taxes? Are we still paying them? I mean, when we talk about things, let's tell the whole truth. I believe the HRA at one time, and I don't know for how long, paid a portion of SCH's taxes. It isn't the big draw to develop downtown that some people like to carry on about because otherwise downtown would be developed and it's not. So I absolutely support what I understand is being said, but nothing beyond that. So you're, you're shaking your head that that's-
I mean, one of the concerns that we did bring up is that this is a risk and that, you know, one of the other concerns was, was basically stringing on the HRA and I said, well, if we say to stay involved, then the risk is on the HRA's plate. If they wanna continue putting work into this, I said, you know, we're not promising a penny.
Right. And maybe they shouldn't.
And that, and that, that gives, that gives Jennifer the decision whether-
I hope your board are a little bit tough-nosed on this because they should be aware of what the city's financial situation is and, um, and don't be looking to us and EDA, they've got no money except what the city gives them. So that is really no comfort whatsoever. Uh, put our name on a grant application, I'd be willing to do that, I would, but other than that-
Any other comments?
Uh, just, Mr. Chair, thank you. The reason I asked Mr. Pritchett to make this is because I don't support the city's purchasing. The question before us last fall was, would we consider investing or partnering, which, which meant a potential for an investment? And I, I echo Mrs. Cope's sentiments one hundred percent and would not support it. I certainly would vote for the, for this motion, but I didn't want it to appear at all that I was in support of us.
Same then.
Purchasing the motel for, for a lot of reasons. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, with that being said, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just the very last thing before, uh, we complete in that, that we did send, I hope you got the copy of the letter, the Tabaja regarding the roof and the situation with the insurance and, uh, we had given them, uh, kind of a request that they, if they had any questions to respond back, they've got a couple days left, we haven't had anything. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Sheeler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we had eight items on the agenda. Item number one was on the consent calendar, item number two was on the consent calendar, item number three, the bus purchases, the motion is to adopt the resolution to accept the bid, uh, or the price of seventy-four thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, which would be twenty percent to local share, twenty-eighty, and I would so move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign?
Roll call.
Yes, that is a roll call, I'm sorry. Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkinhagen?
Yep.
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Now it's for both buses and a motion, okay. One for-
Um, Mr. Engineer, we didn't need two resolutions, did we?
You know, they would be identical resolutions, so that just seems, I, I, I think we can get by with just one.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask, just to make sure.
A and B.
Item number four, agency agreement number oh-five-seven-seven-one, this is Safe Roots to School, this would, um, this will be a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to enter into agreement, up to eighteen thousand dollars worth of funds and I would so move.
There you go. Roll call? Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkinhagen?
Yep.
Coe?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Number five? Number five, improvement thirteen dash nineteen, Garfield Street reconstruction. Um, the motion is to adopt the resolution accepting the bids from GNL or CNL excavating on the St. Joe for seven-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and sixty-five cents and I would so move.
Second.
There'll be quite a bit of discussion on this and I maybe can let the engineer be in, he just dropped this off in front of everybody, you know, why the bids are up and he's, so you wanna just quickly help us out why the bids were eleven percent higher?
If I can, Mr. President, the, uh, yes, we received bids this afternoon or this morning rather for, uh, the street reconstruction up around Garfield School. The little bid did come in about eleven percent higher than our estimate. Um, I passed out an analysis of that to everybody this evening, uh, in the recap and we were kind of curious exactly which work items, uh, came in so high and it's, essentially came from two categories. That was the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer, uh, work. The, uh, we had been hearing that pipe prices have gone up quite a bit. Um, uh, there apparently have been shortages, uh, due to a lot of the construction that's occurring out in the Dakotas. Um, so with that going up, um, we've also, um, we're a little bit concerned about, our, our thought that perhaps with the sanitary sewer work being occurring in some of our alleys, it's gonna be a little bit tighter, so contractors might, um, you know, might have thought that there was gonna be a little bit more difficulty with the replacement of those particular sewers, so we thought perhaps the alley location could have influenced the bid prices a little bit also. Uh, but, uh, a third item that we think influenced it is just, uh, the lack of contractors around here. There has been such little underground work for so many years that all of the underground contractors have pretty much packed up their equipment and their personnel and moved them to North Dakota to do work out there. So, um, so I, I think those that bid, um, two of them I know don't have any crews locally here, they're all out in North Dakota, so, uh, to get those crews back to do an underground job, we think is perhaps adding to the cost also. So after looking at that, we feel that the bids that we received are indicative of, of what the fair, a fair price for the, the work is given the current market conditions. Um, and we don't believe that we're gonna be, uh, that through any kind of a process we could reduce the bid amounts or, or get more favorable bids, so, uh, at least in the near term and perhaps, you know, for some extended period of time, we think the conditions are gonna remain pretty much as they are. Um, so our recommendation would be to, um, to award that bid, uh, to CNL Excavating and to proceed with the work, uh, this construction season. With the, um, two main items being increasing cost for the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer, we do have utility funds available to, um, to, to pay for those. Uh, we still have balances that will cover, uh, that additional cost in those two, uh, utility funds. Uh, the estimated cost of the street work was down a little bit, so the city share from our share of the street work and special assessments against property owners should not be, will not be impacted by the increased, uh, bid prices. So it's just purely our utility funds that will be impacted by that. Um, one other item connected with this, um, bid, uh, we did receive, uh, five bid packages, only four of them were conforming to the bid specs. We did receive a bid from Tri-City Paving from Little Falls that was submitted with the wrong, uh, bid bond. Uh, they submitted a, a bid bond for a project that we, uh, let three weeks ago or four weeks ago. Um, so, uh, with the lack of a bid bond and also without an acknowledgement of the second addendum, uh, which provided for an alternate proposal form, um, when we opened that bid, we did not read it, uh, this morning, uh, because of its, because of the discrepancies and, and its non-conformity with the, uh, bidding process. So, um, that one, we would recommend that the council, uh, take action after the award of the contract to, to reject that particular bid.
Can that be part of this amended motion?
It could be, could be part of the-
I would amend this motion to make that part of the-
Ooh, second to that.
Yeah, I don't know, did I? Anyhow, I will.
To reject the Tri-City bid as part of this and thanks, Jeff.
Any other discussion?
I have this one quick one. Um, Bax would just experience the same thing a couple of weeks ago with their bids came in much higher and it was on the front page of the paper, so it's, you know, just didn't happen to us, but that is gonna be the trend, so with that, I'll move forward.
Roll call.
Yep.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Orkinhagen?
Yep.
Coe?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Item number six was on a consent calendar, item number seven was on the consent calendar.
No, six.
Six. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, yep, you're right on. I was just reading my other notes.
Yeah.
Item number six, select harvest at Trailside Park. Mary would like that, add a little bit to that.
I simply suggested that we recommend to the park board that they take the money that they realize from that sale and put it in a fund to apply toward the, uh, repair or replacement of their roof. I believe Mr. Saylor has advised us that their roof is leaking and, um, it'll either have to be replaced or repaired. Any little amount of money they can put toward that would seem to me to be a good idea. I realize the park board is autonomous, but once again, I'm trying to look at it as how I believe the public will look at things. They have some money not anticipated to have. Um, by the time their thirteen percent is, uh, the DNR takes that, they'll have what, about five thousand, six hundred left or something like that? That's a nice start. And so our committee felt that, we did all agree, that we should recommend to the park board to take that money and put in a fund to begin, begin a fund to replace their roof. And do you want me to make a motion or how do you wanna handle it, Mr. Chair?
Um, that is, that is where the, the funds are going to, their park reserves, that's where it's going to, that's, if we repair their roofs, that's where the funds would come out.
Can the money come out of, there's a law that defines what you can use a park dedication fund.
Reserves, I didn't say dedication.
But it says in our material, it would go in the park dedication fund.
Yeah, I think it did.
That's why I'm-
My apologies, yep.
Because there's a very specific law on park dedication.
Go ahead and make that.
I'll move that, uh, that we recommend to the park board that the money they realize from the sale of timber from the Trailside Park be placed in a fund to assist them with replacement or repair of their roof.
Second? Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Item number seven on the consent calendar, item number eight was for discussion only and it'll be the downtown meeting before fall, so, thank you. End of committee meeting.
Item eight was, yeah, there's no-
We have an eight, but we're not, yeah, discussion.
They chewed it up.
This will make that decision.
Okay, we're on to number nine, Planning Commission. Um, the, uh, Planning Commission was quite busy this last week, um, and, uh-
Good job.
They had, they had a couple of late nights.
Yes, they did.
Mr. Osgard, so I guess I'm gonna turn this over to you, start with A and-
Hopefully we'll be able to get to B and C and D. I thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. First of all, I, uh, I do not have a presentation tonight, I would, don't be alarmed, I don't have a forty-five minute presentation like I had at the Planning Commission meeting for those of you that were there. Um, I think what we should do is get right into what the Planning Commission recommendation is and then we can go from there and ask, you can ask questions and, um, we'll try to answer them. Um, at the May, at the May thirteenth Planning Commission meeting, it did have the public hearing on the interim use permit for, um, Renew Recycling out of Redford, Michigan for the decommissioning of the Wassa facility. Um, that evening, uh, there were representatives from Renew, um, there were representatives from Wassa paper that were here. Um, there actually were five members of the city council and the mayor present that evening. Um, Bladeck was also represented in the audience that evening. What was interesting to note was that there were, appeared to be three neighborhood residents that came to the public hearing, one of which was Councilman Sheeler who does live in the area and then two ladies in the back row of only one spoke. So that night, besides Councilman Sheeler, only one member of that neighborhood spoke at the public hearing. Um, you got the minutes, uh, following the public hearing, um, and there was much discussion and I'll get into just briefly what that was. The Planning Commission did vote four to nothing to recommend the interim use permit approval for, um, Renew Recycling. They had twenty-two findings of fact with thirty-five conditions. Um, there happened to be three planning commissioners that were absent that evening. Um, from that meeting, um, there were a couple of unresolved issues, um, that needed to be resolved, we thought, before, um, the IUP could be approved, one of which was, um, the truck traffic along Mill Avenue. Um, the Planning Commission, we had a, we had a, uh, a condition in the, uh, list that included breaking out the number of truck traffic, uh, numbers of trucks that'll travel on Mill Avenue and how many, uh, how much percentage might be by rail. Uh, Renew simply was unable to answer that at this point in time because they simply have not put together that type of plan to determine how many trucks will be traveling on Mill Avenue each and every day when the process begins. Um, I can understand, uh, where they're coming from at this point in time, but yet it's one of those issues that we should not let go unresolved. Um, we do have a recommended condition to resolve that for you tonight, which I'll get into in a minute. Uh, we talked a little bit about whether or not the, this, the financial guarantee for the overall, uh, decommissioning process should have a number specified in the list of conditions. Um, as of right now, um, we specify, and let me point that out to you, um, that would be, uh, condition number, how do I circle it?
Three? Three isn't a bond, but it's verification of financial capability.
Well, I'd ask you to work off the, um, Planning Commission memo, um, that, uh, is the very first part of the packet that deals with Renew.
Number eighteen.
Cause that is, that is the, um, that is the correct order of, of all the, uh, conditions and findings?
It's on page three.
Yeah. Number eighteen.
Yes, thank you. We specify that it'll be 100% of the estimated cost of all of the improvements. After some discussion today amongst staff, particularly the city engineer and myself, we felt as long as we specified that that bond amount had to be 110% of the total estimated value. That value can still be determined and the value will go into determining the building demolition permit. One of the things we want to make sure here, that the value of the, of the security amount is an amount that is satisfactory to the city of Brainerd. We want to make sure we put that into condition number 18 because I, we don't have that in there yet. We should state something to the effect of Renew will submit a security agreement in a form of performance bond or letters of credit in the amount of 110% of the estimated cost before permits will be issued for works included in all phases of the decommissioning process in, in forms that are acceptable, in amounts except, that are acceptable to the city of Brainerd. Follow that one? With regard to the truck traffic, I did put in front of you a revised condition and I'd like to point out that we would add that and it's actually number 27, not 26. Transportation number 27, all demolition and debris truck traffic into and out of the site will use Mill Avenue entrance. Truck traffic on residential streets is prohibited. Then we would go on to continue with this statement, the owner shall provide the city of Brainerd and Corwin County engineer an accurate track hauling plan that clearly identifies proposed hauling routes, anticipated vehicle counts, and proposed traffic control measures. Prior to being issued a building permit, the owner shall, shall have approved, approval of these plans in writing. We would recommend adding that language to number 27. Now, that isn't the biggest thing, that's not the major thing that dominated the discussion in front of the Planning Commission. The issue that received the most discussion and was the most contentious was the amount of demolition that'll take place in terms of what's going to be removed from the site, how far down the foundation should be removed, whether or not the, or the wall should be removed, whether or not the foundation should be moved. Renew's position was that they would be willing to go two feet below grade. They would merely break up the basement foundation and leave it in place. They would also are recommending or proposing to leave all of the asphalt that's there in place. Our recommendation to the Planning Commission was that is not a situation that is in the best interest of, of the community, at the best interests of the neighborhood, the best interest of site. We are recommending, we recommended the Planning Commission that the site, that everything that's on the site be removed. That would mean all man-made, man-made structures with the exception of the recreational facilities that are there, that being all of the foundation, all of the walls, all of the asphalt, all of the underground network of, of utility piping, leave a complete site, a site that is completely vacant, if you will, of all improvements. Renew, as I said, was not, tried to argue that that wasn't necessary. They tried to express some industry standards in terms of what normal practices in removal. As far as staff was concerned, we stuck to our guns and the Planning Commission felt that that was the best thing to do was the total removal and that's part of the recommendation that's before you tonight. So since the Planning Commission's recommendation, I've had two telephone calls from Renew. One occurred the day after the public hearing. I talked to Peter Avidius on the phone. They were very thankful. They were glad to hear now that they knew what the recommendations were, that there'd be a black and white type of decision. There would hopefully be no gray areas as far as they were concerned. And it was a positive phone call, that they were still interested in pursuing the, the project. And then I didn't hear from them on Friday. I didn't get any messages over the weekend and late today, I was at another meeting at about four o'clock this afternoon, I got a voice message from Peter Avidius from Renew again, in a positive message stating that they were gonna, they were waiting to find out what the outcome of tonight's meeting was and wanted to be informed of what that's going to be. So if there's any rumors out there that they've withdrawn from the project, they have not so formally submitted anything to, to the city that they are withdrawing. So we are recommending that we continue through with the decision process so that we can come to a close with this IUP application. In closing, the planning department was merely kind of a coordinator of all this information. This report could not have been done without the assistance of the city engineer, Jeff Hallsetter, the building official, Tim Cahy, and the Brainerd Department of Public Utilities Superintendent Scott Magnuson. They were the three people that provided all, all the real technical information that went into this report and I owe a big debt of gratitude to them. And so if it's those technical questions you have, I'm going to have to rely on those guys to, to help you. And Tim is here tonight. We had some real issues with the structure that may have been left behind or that may still want to be left behind in terms of what, what's needed. Jeff was really instrumental with the Planning Commission in explaining to them all of the concerns that would go along with leaving the foundation and the walls and the infrastructure in place. So I thank those guys very much for, for their input, so. With that, Mr. President, I'll end my report and if there's any questions, I'll be, have you try to answer them or...
Do you want to make a motion or do you want to ask a question?
Just because first and foremost, I would agree. I thought staff did a fabulous job in getting all of this information and you can obviously tell they worked very hard, put a lot of hours in it. So that really helped a lot. Anyway, some of the questions I had for you, Mark, is the formula for the permit amount, is that going to be included? I mean, because I know, Jeff, we talked about that in the last meeting, I think.
Yep, that, that's a very good question and that's the, one of the questions I'd ask either the city engineer or the building official to respond to.
And then are you asking us if we should be putting a dollar amount in for the performance bond?
No, we don't, after talking about that, we don't think we need to have, need to have that amount specified in the conditions.
And then I did have a quick question. On number 11, there's, well, actually a number nine escrow account. I did read it, reread it and read it again. It is, and I know when we talked about it, you said that it's $5,000 continually or perpetually.
Right.
But it, as I read it, nothing says that. So I'm wondering if we can maybe adjust that.
Yeah, very good point.
But it's always at $5,000?
That's our, that's our recommendation is you have a, a balance of $5,000 be maintained in that account. So if it gets drawn up down for some testing, that they would have to replenish that escrow amount in that account, to that amount.
So we can add the word replenish?
Yeah, whatever is the word that is...
Or maintain.
Maintain. And I, we talked about that, Councilwoman, and I apologize for not getting that.
That's all right. And then number 11, if we could possibly add in all third-party reports, because I know there was a lot of discussion about third-party vendors doing noise and vibration testings and what have you, and I would like to make sure that staff has the availability to, you know, to read those reports, you know, whenever they come to, obviously, back. And then we also that night talked about the potential of, and when we talked about the, all of that concrete being removed, it still was very, left unclear as to whether or not there will be or potentially will be a concrete crusher. And I think we need to address that in the event they do decide to bring one in. And maybe we can leave that out for now, I don't know, but I think that's going to be pretty important if, if they're planning on to crush the concrete on site or, so it might be something that we should probably...
Thank you very much for reminding me about that one. My recommendation to the council is that we should address it in the conditions and come up with language for that and it shouldn't be too difficult for me to, to craft some if you have other questions of staff to, to add.
And last and final question was the shoreline regulations. We, that's in the initial part of it, that wasn't in, that's in the interim portion of it?
Right. Yep. And a very small portion of the site is affected by the shoreline regulations, just a very small portion, but nonetheless, we do need to...
There's still a bluff and there's still a... Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation.
I would second that.
And with what Mark has stated and we'll wait for the rest of that motion.
Other discussion?
Just a question. If they proceed with this, Renew, once they actually get on the property and begin from that day onward...
Yes.
About how long do they anticipate it will take?
Well, the interim use permit is going to be good for one year.
Oh.
One year only with the potential of one six-month extension.
They think it'll take that long?
There is a lot.
Well, there is.
Especially if they go down to nothing.
Mr. President? And I want, you know, to address one concern by the citizen and that was wondering about the environmental and the, and the citizens' aspect of this whole thing that was addressed. And I just want everybody to know, I've been in a lot of meetings and I know that, that concern, you know, for the environmental and the hardship and the noise and dust and vibration has been addressed over and over for the people in Northeast. And I live in Northeast and I definitely going to be policing this as well for all of that, but I do want that citizen and all citizens know that that has been the heart of all of our conversations was all the environmental issues and anything that could possibly affect anybody in Northeastern. So I want to make sure, you know, and even on the sightly end at the end with your, you know, ideas of restoration, it was always the concerns of the citizens. So I want citizens to know that that was part of it.
If this ever comes to fruition, we look forward to having you out there as another inspector on the job, informally.
Other discussion?
I have one more thing that's going to end.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And the last thing I want to add for the people that are here, we are just pretty much mirroring Sartell's plan here, very much so. And I have to, should thank Sartell for doing a wonderful job for bringing up a lot of this information for us to work with.
And incidentally, we contacted the Metrodome contractor that was doing the demolition to get input from them on whether or not what we were requesting was over the top and they thought it was right in line for what they would expect.
Was that because this is our Metrodome?
That's Gary Scheeler's. I'm sorry, Gary, I stole that the other night. I shouldn't have done that.
Any other discussion? Do we want to do a roll call?
Mr. President?
Oh, yes.
I would suggest in response to Councilwoman Matten's statement about the crusher, crushing situation, that we add a condition that the owner shall provide a concrete crushing plan if it is occurring on the site.
And I would amend my motion. Would that include the asphalt also?
Hmm, what do you think? Do you think they would...
That's probably not going to be crushed on site. That would be hauled to another location, to a rat pile somewhere.
Okay.
Or made to get milled and hauled off, would be my guess.
And did you want to have any conversation about the valuation before you voted or not?
And I would be comfortable with that because I think the initial start of this was that you had a $45 demolition permit. And we said we cannot go into this with 45, and the reason I think we got to the point we're at is because, again, I would like to know how you're going to, what your, how you're going to come up with a cost that the city can get paid for all the man-hours.
Okay. Right, Ken, Mr. President? If you'll recall, we amended section 10 of the city code regarding fees or related to fees and made commercial demolition subject to the commercial fee schedule. So that's, that's not a fixed fee any longer, it's a sliding scale based on valuation. For the demolition, you know, right now, it's been difficult because it's a moving target. Now, there's been discussion about removing some portions of the building, saving the portions of the building. So until we know exactly what's going to get removed, it's difficult to calculate that valuation. We've consulted a number of different cities about how to value that. Some cities have valued it on a square footage basis, have valued it on, on some other, you know, percentage of, of scale and, and certainly, we always take into account whatever the contractor is, is getting paid to demo a, a site. So if it's, you know, for instance, if a contractor has a bid for, for $100,000 to demo a site, then the, the permit would be based on that valuation. This particular case, we, we're not really sure. We're, we're thinking that, we're looking at a total valuation somewhere in the two to three million range. And, you know, so we're, we're thinking that, you know, that would, you know, as soon as we are able to fine tune that, then we would be able to determine what the amount of the performance bond should be and then also the, the permit fee.
What are you basing the permit fee on? 1%, 2% or, I mean, it's got to be consistent, I would think.
The, yes, it's a, based on valuation, it's about, roughly about $6 per thousand in valuation.
0.06%.
So about six tenths of a percent. Pardon?
It decreases as the valuation goes higher.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
But we are, we are voting based on the understanding that... Jeff, did you say something about not knowing which buildings are going to go and which are going to stay?
Well, that, that has been a moving target, so...
Are we voting though based on...
Yes.
That they're all going away?
Yes.
Don't get confused about that.
Right.
Everything is the recommendation from the...
Because we can only do this one step at a time and right now, we're talking big picture.
Exactly.
And nothing left.
Are we safe to say that you're going to have hundreds and hundreds of hours, you know, with staff over there in this one-year process? And I'm seeing heads nodding and that's...
Yeah.
Okay.
James is putting a trailer in out there.
Is it zoned properly for this?
And the purpose of the fee is to recoup the costs.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, any other comments?
Just kidding.
Okay, here none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side? Motion carries. Thank you. Are you doing number B also, Mark?
Letter B?
Letter B.
Yes, I am. That is request of St. Francis Church to reuse a residential facility on 10th Street for office purposes on a temporary basis. It is planning an expansion to its facility and while that expansion would occur, they need temporary office space and they own the house just to the north of their property on, on 10th Street, oh, north of their parking lot on 10th Street. It's a church use to reuse the residential structure as office space for church purposes. They needed a conditional use permit. They have met with the building official to talk about the changes that would be needed. One of the reasons for approval was the only exterior change that would be seen is the handicapped accessibility ramp that would provide access for handicapped individuals. It would remain as a, looking as a residential structure. There's handicap parking available just to the south of the building and when the, when the construction project is complete, the dwelling will either be demolished or turned into community space or parking for the, for the church, for the church use.
Thank you.
And the Planning Commission's recommendations to, is unanimously to approve.
Okay. One question on the demolition part of it, and has the neighborhood been kind of notified of the demolition and parking? I mean, I'm okay with all, all the way up until the house being demoed, but I know north side...
I don't know that that's a question that we could really ask tonight because at the time that, they, do they need a permit to do that at the time?
Well, if they actually are, they would need that permit.
So at this point, I don't know that that's, that should be, should not be contingent upon the motion upon us tonight.
And they own the property.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side? Motion carries. You guys can stay if you want.
I already have one to consult on today.
C, the final plot of Eastview... C, the final plat of Eastview.
Yeah? The final plat of Eastview is the five-lot, 10-unit, side-by-side duplex development that is a replat of North Town West. The submittal of the final plat is, is reviewed by the planning commission, and if it is found to be in compliance with the preliminary plat, its recommendation comes to the city council for final approval. The final plat is a legal document that gets recorded at the, at the county. The planning commission found that the one change that needed to be made with the easement was made, and they found the final plat to be in compliance with the preliminary plat, and it is recommending approval.
Discussion, question, do we want to make a motion?
So move.
Second.
We got our names swapped around, they won't know who's who.
Any other, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
Letter D, the first reading of proposed ordinance 1414 and ordinance amending Brainerd City zoning code, code related to extended stay hotels, motels.
Let me find this one in the packet, this is a little bit more involved. Don't let me put you on this one, can certainly chime in if I miss something. This all started when there was some discussion about the repurposing of the Brainerd Hotel into some kind of extended stay facility motel. We didn't really know what it was going to be, the owner wanted the ability to have extended stay at the, at the property. So, the planning commission took up that issue of trying to define what extended stay is at a hotel or motel. Since they started this process, the owner has gone on to a different potential buyer where extended stay as a hotel or motel is not going to be the issue. But the planning commission still thought it would be a good idea to continue through with this process, just to clarify in our zoning ordinance, should it come down the, down the road, that we are proposed to have an extended stay, a hotel with extended stay opportunities. So, what it did, it completed the process of an ordinance amendment to add the language that defines what an extended stay hotel is. And it also identified what an extended stay hotel is required to have, such as a limited, stays are limited to 90 days, guest room sizes have to be a minimum area. A major component was it was required to have kitchen facilities, including a stove and oven. And item D would be providing records on an annual basis to the city on the, the records that it keeps throughout the year for, for extended stay. There was a little bit of, and that is the, ordinance A is the one that the planning commission recommended. However, there was a little bit of, of concern over needing a little bit more clarification. So, that's why we've, we've given you an ordinance B. In the original A, we didn't have anything that stated the city of Brainerd would be notified about a hotel becoming extended stay. So, that has been added, the city of Brainerd will be notified prior to become an extended stay. And then, in item E, we've added the very last sentence to clarify that the city of Brainerd has the right to review the records upon request. And those, those are the two additions that, that are helping to clarify what the planning commission desires, is recommending. So, that's why we included both A and B. So, this is being submitted to you for your consideration of either option A or option B for the first reading, council member. Pritchett, did I cover that?
Thank you.
Okay?
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Yes, I have one question, on D, where you say 18 years of age that rents, you know, each person, you know, you want a record, but I'm just going to throw this out there, let's say, me and another person and another person were in this room, and then after 90 days, I would just have the other person start the 90-day process, and then later after that, the other person would start the 90. Can that extended stay, just, you know, whoever's going to put the room in their name, just keep this process going 90 days after 90 days, just by just saying, okay, now it's your turn, after 90 days, go up there and put it in your name?
Well, if I may, I hate to say this, but that's not the intent. Very good question. May we get a chance before this, if you're going to have the first reading tonight, to get a chance to look at that scenario, to see if, if it's, we can clarify it in the language for you in time for the second reading? Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, and I just was going to throw that out.
It's a good question that didn't come up, and I want to make sure I give you a, a good answer.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, and additionally, along the same vein, it says 90 consecutive days. So, I'm presuming that one person or two or three, whatever, they could check out after the 90 days, be gone for a week, and then come back, start the whole process. I don't think you can really govern every potential that may happen, so I'm not necessarily squawking about that, because I don't think you're going to be able to cover it all.
What would be the advantage?
But I just, I, sometimes I wonder, sometimes with some of these wordings, if they mean anything, because there's all sorts of ways to kind of circumvent them.
Well, a very good point, all we can hope for is, is that if we ever get this facility like this, that the owners would be willing to work with these guidelines, and if they, it's going to be difficult for us to be able to police it, if you will, in the, so. But if there is a problem, then we do have standards by which we can apply if there does become a problem.
So, we basically have two decisions we're going to make, number one, we have to decide whether we want A or B, and number two, we have to decide whether we want the first reading.
I'd like to move that we accept, do the first reading for B.
Second. What was that?
For B.
B.
There any other discussion?
Yeah, and I would, I'm going to hang on to the B part of that. The language C would be in B, and the reason I'm going to hang on to this for our next meeting is, you say all guest rooms, you know, for storage and food, 300 square feet are limited to a maximum of two persons per room. And next week, when we talk about tiny houses, I want to see how you implement that. But anyway, that was my other plug. For some reason, you're in a hotel, you only want two people, but in the tiny houses, there's no language.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, so the motion is for us to approve the first reading for number B, or letter B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Okay, we're up to public forum, time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council, time limits may be imposed. Is there anybody here for public forum? Aye.
My name is Bill Deon, 3rd Avenue, Northeast. I wasn't going to say anything, I was just coming to watch the meeting, and it always amazes me on how government gets in the way of people and business, it just amazes me. Why do you care if they have extended stay or, or not? What's the difference? It's government getting in the way of people. And I got another question, the mill, now they have to be.
Please direct your, your questions to us.
The mill they're talking about has to be two feet below the dirt, okay, the foundation, what is the point of that, I just want to know?
Okay. Yeah, the questions that you're asking for are items that are on our agenda, and that's not what public forum is about, but.
Well, how do you find that out, then? I'm just interested.
The, the main reason is that staff has told us that when you have foundations in one area and no foundations in another, when they do soil testing to put in a, a foundation, if they don't do the proper testing, you have solid footing over here where the foundation is, not so, not so much over here, and you end up with potential of some settling, and, and you can end up having a ruined property.
So, it would be putting the cost onto the new, the new property coming in, right?
Could I add one more comment for Bill? One of the other reasons farther down than two feet is to say that the, that area gets developed, and we got to run sewer, water, and you've got a 17-foot wall here, you go down the frost level, it's got to be at least seven, eight feet, and they're going to run into one wall after another wall of cement in that. So, that, and that's why they did it in Sartell, is to remove all of the footings and everything else because of potential redevelopment, I think.
I just wondered if it was from contamination or what, okay.
And Mr. Chair, and, Mr. Chair, Bill, I think on your first question, it's more a question of safety, so that people don't go in someplace, are able to stay and stay as if it were a home, and yet, maybe they're plugging in a hot plate somewhere, the electricity isn't up to code, et cetera. It's more of a, if they're going to use it as a home, then I think the city feels some responsibility that it be safe, that's, I think mainly.
But again, that'll be interesting with your conversation next meeting, I agree with you.
Thank you, Bill.
Anybody else here for open forum? Anyone else here for open forum? Yeah, close the open forum at 8:52. Reports, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President, I've still got 10 minutes, that Sheriff Dahl left me. Anyway, but one of the things that Sheriff Dahl did mention is about Memorial Day coming up, and there'll be traffic galore coming, like he said, probably starting tomorrow, so I urge everybody to drive safely and, and keep your cell phones in your pocket or in your bag in your car.
Or give it to your wife.
Or give it to my wife, there you go. But, one of the things that, with Memorial Day coming up, and I take part in that, and it's, to me, it's a time to reflect and treasure the freedoms we now enjoy because of the sacrifices of so many. And many have given some, but there are many that have given their all. And I think that it's important that we take time to reflect and appreciate the lives that have been given, so that we can enjoy the freedoms that we still enjoy today. So, that, thank you, and end of my long report.
Thank you. To the attorney?
Excuse me, I have nothing general to report, I did have one comment about our agenda here on the adjournment to the closed meeting. We have a, a reference here to a statute, it should be 13D 03.
13 what?
13D point 03, that's actually the provision that refers to closing a meeting for labor occupation strategy.
Thank you.
One question, is it okay to ask you about 28th Street, because we kind of, if you've got some progress moving forward, or have you set anything up on it, or?
Um, I don't have anything to report at this time.
Okay.
I can get you a report.
Okay, thank you.
As soon as, as soon as I can.
It hasn't been turned over to the county yet, then?
No, no.
City administrator?
I will defer to Councilmember Borkanagan to update the council on the meeting we had with Noké Lake Township.
Good idea, that was a great meeting, it felt good going out there and putting, demonstrating that we're serious about working tight partnership with all of the fire advisory group. And they were very appreciative of us coming out there. It just, it was one of those feel-good meetings.
Are you doing this? Yeah, go ahead.
One other comment is, there are some conflicts with the townships, they have meetings the same nights that we do, so there may be times where we'll make the council aware of it, that we go to those township meetings, and they start at 7:00, also, we'll try to get on their agendas, and then we'll come right back to here, but we told them that, we value their opinion, and that means that Chip and I may have to go to those meetings to represent the city in that.
Didn't you also say that there's a reason why they can't make a quarterly meeting?
It's the same reason, exactly, the same reason. We're going to work on, on that situation.
Okay, city engineer?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I just have a couple of items. See, we've got a couple of contracts that, one is complete, our crack filling contract has been completed. We have another contractor in town starting the concrete work, our spot curb and gutter replacement on Willow Street and 10th Avenue, Northeast. That's also the contractor that will be doing the mill and overlay on 5th Street next to City Hall. The concrete should be set up and cured by the end of next week, so we expect to see the reclaiming activities probably starting in about a week and a half. And those should progress quite quickly, once, once they get started. See, that's, end of report.
Thank you. Police chief is not here, finance director's not here.
Because it's a given, Mary, it is.
It's a given.
Oh.
Sorry, this is something else.
I'll hand it out to them, so they're all over.
Yeah. Mark, did I skip you?
I caught on, Mr. President. Yes, you did. I have a few items to report on, first of all, the Mississippi Riverfront Steering Committee has two meetings coming up before your next meeting. You may want to consider adjourning to one of them, or both of them or one of them, May 21st, this Wednesday, is Steering Committee. They will be preparing, part of that agenda will be preparing for the May 31st, um, community workshop, that'll be, that's a Saturday from 10:00 to noon at Central Lakes College. That's an opportunity for the Steering Committee to get feedback from the community with regard to the Mississippi River Steering, Mississippi River Plan. So, you may want to consider adjourning to those. We have received funding for the Walkable Bicable City Committee Survey, that's been ready for a while, but we, we're seeking outside funds, and we received funds from Minnesota Department of Health. The statewide health improvement program is going to be providing most of the money, and the Kyanah Medical Center will be providing the rest of it. Walk and Wheel Night, second annual, was, was, I think, a success, the attendance was up from the first year, and a little bit bigger and a little bit better, and hopefully, it will be next year, they can even have more publicity and make it an even better event. And finally, Pine Street, I'd like to give you where we're at with Pine Street. Now that we have the court order that allows us to go on the property to clean it up, what we're going to do is we're going to get a shipping container and put that on the property, and rather than trying to sort out what's, has value and what doesn't have value, we're going to take everything that's on the property that's outside, put it in that shipping container, and store it at the street department for a period of time, 14 days, 21 days, something like that, that's the length of time the owner would have to, to claim it. If it's not claimed within that period of time, then we would take it to the landfill and dispose of it, and all of those costs that with, for the, the storage container, the cost of the cleanup, the dumping would all be assessed to the property.
Mr. Chair? I have a question regarding this side. Mr. Planner? There's also all those fines that were forgiven. Will he also have to pay those?
No.
Will he ever have to pay them? Because he didn't do what they, I thought a condition was that he had to meet certain stipulations for the fines to be abated, and he didn't make those. Was that not, and I, maybe this is more a question for the attorney, but you mentioned the dollars and cents and, and the fines, and it was, of course, front page news that he was, all these fines were forgiven on, and the accumulating fines, et cetera, et cetera. And that if he followed what was necessary by the court order, and he, and he didn't.
Right.
So, my question is, is. So my question is, is he gonna have to pay those fines? And your answer is no. And my question is why?
Very good question. If you will allow me to confirm with our prosecutor, Matt Molly, to see where that was left and then see how the situation as it is today affects those fines and, and report back to you.
Thank you.
What were those dates that you wanted us to adjourn to?
Wednesday, May twenty-first at six P M, or four P M, and Saturday, May thirty-first at ten A M. The twenty-first is at the fire station and thirty-first is at Central Lakes College.
To just clarify, because I thought, I must have heard that wrong the first time, the, the meeting on the twenty-first starts at four o'clock?
Correct.
Okay. I thought that was the ten o'clock meeting, okay.
I just have one comment on Chad Ross, the situation at Pine Street, if I can just... The only thing that he took away from that site is my trailer that I borrowed him to use. Everything else is there by my trailer.
No good deed goes on any scary.
Okay.
Can we get those dates on the river thing one more time?
Five twenty-one, it's a Wednesday at four P M.
At the fire station.
At the fire station. And Saturday, May thirty-first at ten A M, and that says C L C, is that correct, Mark?
Saturday, May twenty-first.
Thirty-first, that's C L C at ten A M. But that's at one o'clock.
Thank you.
What time did you say?
Ten. The Marx meeting is at ten, Miracle League is at one.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. President's Report. I, I know that you, the several-page report, you've had this before, I just wanted to hand it out again. And what I did with the single-page report is I just took the, the sections and put them all on one page and highlighted the items that I want to make sure that we all understand because every once in a while we get kind of involved with the discussion and for everybody else, this is basically the rules of decorum for the city council. It just tells us that we must preserve order. Everybody, no person or member of the council shall address the council without being recognized by the presiding officer. No member of the council shall speak more than twice on any question nor more than five minutes on each, each time without consent of the council. Members of the city staff shall observe the same rules and members of the council staff and public shall confine remarks to the matter under debate. I, you know, we all need reminders and I just wanted to put this out again. And I am in the process of reading our council bible, which is the Sturgis Handbook, and that's where this comes from, you know. Most people are familiar with the Roberts Rules, but we have Sturgis.
Very similar.
And once I finish that, if I find anything different than this, I'll let you know. President? Yes.
And I'm sure you brought this because we have some weaknesses here. Could you point out some of the weaknesses that you feel that we could become better at on this? Because I'm sure you must have thought of this because of our weaknesses.
Well, I just know that on occasion, some people do interact inappropriately with other council members. You know, without even thinking about it, they do that, or they can do that. And also, there are times where you've got something in your, your mind, you've got a question and without, you know, giving everybody else an opportunity, you blurt out the question and... So, I mean, it's those little things that, that sometimes make it look like to the general public and other observers that we're quarreling, quarreling, fighting. And we're not, it's just that we all have our own, we all have our own method of communicating. So, just, just a reminder.
No, I want to thank you for that and if I can do anything better to help you, I sure will. Thank you for all of that.
Anybody else have any other comments? Okay, so then that brings us down to other committee reports.
I have to make a quick one and Gary will be looking at his watch now for five minutes. On Brainerd History Week, don't blame Patrick for this. I told Patrick I wanted to give this to the council and ask for your comments and it will then be put in a sealed envelope and placed in the time box. And I did say to Patrick, and it would not be acceptable to say Mary Coop will still be on the council. I don't want you to blame Patrick for that because that was, came right from me. But Brainerd History Week is shaping up, I think, very nicely. The sixteenth will be the ceremony at City Hall, I hope you'll all be here. It begins at nine in the morning with the mayor's breakfast.
Eleven in the morning.
Nine in the morning with the mayor's breakfast. At the Sawmill Inn.
The mayor wanted to sleep in.
All the mayors in the county are, have been invited, as well as the mayor of Little Falls because she's been a good friend here and James interacts with her on the Camp Ripley issues often. Then at eleven o'clock sharp, we'll begin the ceremony. The national, or the veterans and the legion are working with us and they will come, converge, come from Sixth and Fourth with the Antique Car Club, who will be bringing their antique cars, converge in front of City Hall. Our special guest of honor will be Walt Straka. He is the last surviving veteran of the Baton Death March in this area. And I believe there are only two or three. I'm trying to work with staff who are way ahead of me on this, but to help Walt with the raising of the flag, the pledge. We'll have a keyboard brought in. We have Sarah Gorham will be playing for us and Cleo Kelbs will lead in the National Anthem. Our own Tom Fitzpatrick will be our emcee for the program and we'll have a number of short speakers and we are saying short.
What's the minimum height?
I mean, the speeches should not be too long, is what I, is what I mean. Following the basic ceremony, we will be burying the time capsule. Staff and Tony Sanner especially have been very helpful. I believe the park department is making a box to place the items in. The public is invited to submit your remarks as to what should be in that time box as well. It's determined that it can be placed under the slab that the bench sits on by the elevator entrance. As you come in, to your left, there's a slab with a bench. It is that bench that I understand will be replaced with a bench that staff are purchasing in honor of Bonnie. And so at that same time, the slab can be removed and the time box put in there. Following the ceremony, there will be cake and coffee all afternoon in City Hall. Asking the mayor's wife to begin the, the cake cutting and coffee serving, we'll have two at least for each. Be asking the wives of our former mayors or representatives of former mayor families to take, help us with that, with that serving. There'll be music all afternoon, keyboard, and people will be in here playing that for at least two hours. And then we will have an old-time band on City Hall lawn, providing it isn't raining or snowing, for another hour. Some of you may be familiar with Skoll Music and they are the band that will be playing, very good, old-time, bouncy music. No amplifier and... There will be no ice. And, so that's Monday. Tuesday is Railroad Day, we were built on the railroad. Northern Pacific is underwriting that day. There were a couple of glitches because of their big building not being appropriate for a huge gathering. After we cried and begged and whined and pleaded with Rick Farbwell, he was able to persuade Bob Hutton, the owner, to put the money in and they have been working non-stop to bring it up to the condition it needs to be in for a big dinner, it'll be a big sit-down dinner, a band. The tickets are fifty dollars. I know that's a little steep for good old Brainerd, but fifteen dollars of every ticket will go to the museum, so that part is tax deductible. And there will be tours all day of the railroad property. People there to tell you about the history of the railroad. Wednesday is the children's parade downtown, Teddy Bear Parade, and then in the afternoon, a huge and momentous occasion that we seem to have off again, on again, but right now it's on. It is huge and I know I'm over five minutes, but let me tell you this and then I won't tell you the rest. It would be at the site of the lynching of the two Indians in eighteen seventy-two. And that spot is about halfway down the block on Fourth Street between Front and Laurel. And two Indians were accused of killing a girl who was herself half-Indian and half-white. They were dragged in and put in jail. Of course, there was no judge here at the time, so a telegraph had been sent to Saint Paul to try to get a judge to come and have a trial for those two Indians. The appropriate process was being followed. However, that night, a group of, of men broke into the jail, dragged out the two Native Americans. They had the gallows built, hauled them over there and hanged them without due process. It was a lynching, it was without due process. Been a subject that we've talked about at length every month since last November when we began this process. It's part of our history. It isn't something we're celebrating, but it's part of our history. We're calling it a ceremony of reconciliation. To do that, we need the involvement of our Native Americans. These two were of the white earth. It appears that it's now on. They had a number of requirements. They are understandably sensitive about it. But I believe that they now know that our goal is reconciliation, putting out our hand as a neighbor. And, and so they seem to be on board. There had been a plaque made many years ago to put on that site. The wording on that plaque was not appropriate, I mean, it was not agreeable to our Native Americans. That means we have to have a new plaque made. That will cost us about a thousand dollars. I was successful in working with the Kichigami Regional Library, who gets a small amount of, of, what's the, or, uh, legend?
Legend.
Funds. And they have agreed to give us the thousand dollars for the plaque plus an additional five hundred for Thursday's celebration at the fairground, which will be some reenactments of all historical things, the blacksmith shop, war trading, that kind of thing. If we are able to continue with the celebration with Native Americans, part of what they want to see happen is the ceremony called the Wiping of the Tears. It sounds very beautiful and they would take care of that. And the second part would be the rubbing of the sage, which in their culture has the meaning, I believe, of trying to purify what had happened, to ask forgiveness. There would be some, little bit of dried sage burned and then the ashes rubbed in the site and on the, perhaps on the plaque. They want our mayor to stand with them as that takes place and of course, we know he will do that. And I'm hoping all of us will be there so we can put our hands out and shake hands with our, with our Native American friends. Following that, there would be a tour of the Humphrey Center at C L C, where there are many wonderful artifacts of the Indian culture. And there will be a reception there that the American Legion Auxiliary has volunteered to put on. We are hoping for, and it's, I don't believe totally cast yet, but we hope it will follow, would be an exhibition. An exhibition, the best I can describe it, would be like a small powwow. We had hoped for like a big powwow, but knowing so little about it, we found out. A huge powwow takes a couple of years and is huge. But they said they do exhibitions which is small with a limited number of dancers, so on. We're hoping we can have. So that takes you through Wednesday. I hope you'll all be involved in it, I'll be calling on you for help and if you can help, I hope you will. There is a lot of work that still needs to be done in the details. The framework is there, we invite the public for their ideas. We could have had a month, I guess, there's so, history is so deep and so beautiful in this area and we've done nothing about it. So I think it's an opportunity for us to bring back what I've always thought is that mystique about Brainerd with its history and its people. And so we invite everyone to participate. If you're out there still watching this, we'd like your ideas, we'd like, what do you think twenty-one, one-four will look like? It doesn't just need to be things. I told Chip tonight, I think babies will be implanted with chips instead of social security. I think that will, I think not him, a chip. I said, I think that's gonna happen. You know, a chip said...
They're already doing that.
Chip said maybe there'll be a one-world government. I mean, it can be your ideas about many things that will the world, what will it look like in twenty-one, four? So join us, help us, this is a community event and I think it's going to be really beautiful if we can, if we, if it doesn't rain and snow all week. Thanks.
Are there any other committee reports? Yes.
Mr. Chair, I am so sorry, I missed, could Mrs. Coop repeat that? The last forty-five minutes. I'm sorry, Gary, did you get all that? Could you refer a third time? Because I heard it at B P U about two weeks ago, word for word.
Well, not quite.
You gotta learn to stay awake.
Sorry.
I just, I couldn't, I was taking notes.
And I want to thank, we should, you know, make fun of her because she has done so much.
Well, we've, we have worked, the committee has been wonderful. And every week and then we're talking back and forth and, and new things come up and...
Bevins was only kidding about repeating.
Any other committee reports?
Hearing none. We will be adjourning to the meeting on five twenty-one, which is this Wednesday at four P M. And also adjourning to the Saturday meeting on five thirty-one. And so in addition to that, we also will be adjourning to closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D dot oh three to discuss union negotiation strategies.
Did you say evening, Saturday evening?
That's...
I don't, if I did, I'd go ten o'clock in the morning, it's A M.
Okay.
A M.
Yeah.
And one, that's, I guess that's what I was saying, there's two on Saturday.
Yeah, Miracle Field.
Thirty-first, yeah, the Miracle League field.
Oh, that's right.
And the Wednesday, possibly, the Mississippi River meeting on Wednesday.
That's a adjourning every day.
Yeah, we might as well.
You're right.
We might as well.
So, there's, on the, on the twenty-first, there's a chance of a meeting. And the thirty-first.